Good evening, everyone. This is a conference meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township held in Council Chamber, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey on Wednesday, August 4th at 7:05 PM. Roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Present.
Councilmember Montague III?
Present.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wooton?
Here.
Council President Coley?
Present.
Also present is Joyce Linaire, the City Clerk, Lisette Sanchez, Deputy City Clerk, Chris M. Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Laquana Best, the Planning Director, Chief Long, Fire Department, Adrian Matt, Finance Director, Marty Mays, Public Works Director, Alvin White, Deputy City Attorney, now Clements, Chief Financial Officer, Paula Fiera, Tax Collector, Marlin G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer, and Tamara Robinson, Clerk's Office. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign one book. Each person signing the book will be allowed to speak for maximum five minutes. The requirements of NJISSA 10:4-9 et cetera, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Record Transcript, published in the Star Ledger on July 2nd, 2021, posted in the Bulletin Board and City Hall, on the Council's website, the City's website, and filed in Office of the City Clerk. Our first matter of discussion this evening will be our representative from Essex County, Mr. Tim Walker.
Wow, I didn't realize I was leading off. President Coley?
How are you, sir?
Doing well. The rest of the board? Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to report back on a couple of questions that were raised last time about some housekeeping issues at Orange Park. We had sent over last month just a breakdown on what's going on out there. Essentially, we have four porta-jons that are located in the park. They're serviced three times a week. Additionally, our maintenance staff picks up the park six times per week. There are 75 garbage cans in the park, and the trash is collected five times per week. Additionally, the landscape improvement project at the park began last month. Plantings were put at the circle on the corner of South Center and Harrison, and there were additional plantings at the entrances near the corner of both streets. Did we have any questions or any other comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Well, I would like to thank you because sometimes we're told things are going to get done, and they don't get done, and I know we beat you up a lot.
That's fine.
But I'm so thankful. I saw the irrigation system at Orange Park. I saw the flowers. I think it's $105,000, $110,000 worth of beautification.
Yep.
And hopefully, it'll bring all the brides and grooms back to what Orange Park used to be. I asked before, like, all the county parks are known for something, and I'm just hoping that, you know, we can bring back that family, those high school pictures and things like that. So I really, really appreciate the irrigation system because I know trying to do stuff at my own home without proper water, Councilwoman Wooton and myself have planted various spots of the city, and things have died because we didn't have a way to water it. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Let me see. That was it.
Okay.
Is there any, is there any thought about changing the fencing around Orange Park?
That is an ongoing discussion.
Okay.
I raised it just this morning, matter of fact, in our cabinet meeting. As soon as I hear something back, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, and thank you for the work that's ongoing right now with the shrubs that's being put out there. Thank you very much. I was around the park the other day, and the park needs, there's tree limbs hanging all around the park on the ground from the fallen trees. That needs to be picked up, okay? Councilwoman Johnson just said the fence. The fencing, there's some broken fence, you know, on the Alcott side, okay, that needs to be replaced. Also, it needs to be painted, you know, because it's all dingy, dirty, and rusted out all around the fencing. And also, what else I saw there? Oh, when you enter the park where it says Monte Urban Park?
Mm-hmm.
The tree limbs is hanging over there where you can hardly see the names, so they need to be pruned.
Need some pruning, okay?
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember, any other?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Montague.
Mr. Walker, how are you?
Good.
Did we ever address the issue with the traffic lights go, you know, when you go into the signs? Did we ever figure out anything?
It was raised with our Director of DPW. Let me follow up with him and find out what he's doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Council Vice President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, but thank you for always being there and responding and in a timely manner. One thing I need you to follow up with me, which I meant to turn the lights on on Park Avenue.
Will do.
They're still there. Been there for a long time, and I know part of it is they have to paint the street and make sure, because they paid part of it, part of it, they didn't.
Yes.
So could you, could you get me a timeline as to when they're going to turn the lights on on Park Avenue? Thank you. Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. This is regarding the county roads that run through Orange and street sweeping. I received the street sweeping schedule for the county, but unfortunately, on some of those roads, Mr. Marty Mays and VA Chris, we allow parking on some of those roads, so they can't be swept by the county. So is there any kind of way we can come together to try to alleviate that? Because we get tons and tons of calls about, you know, certain streets being dirty and not being clean, and that would be fantastic.
Okay, so you just want a little better collaboration between the county?
Right, and see what we can do as far as a city, because we allow people to park on some of those county roads.
Right.
Some of the county roads, we don't allow people to park, but they park, and then when you come through at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
You can't sweep because, but then we'll get calls saying that Scotland Road is dirty, or you don't ever clean Park Avenue, so it's not fair to you, and it's not fair to the residents who want to see it clean.
Sure.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Johnson.
Real quick, I want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Walker for being our liaison and for coming to our meetings, and I know he's got a long things-to-do list, but he actively tries to check those things off, dealing with the bureaucracy in Essex County on our behalf. So, Mr. Walker, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments for County Rep? Any closing comments, Mr. Walker, from the county?
No, sir. No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm real sorry about the misunderstanding. I'm sorry about this.
Our next matter of discussion is Vincent Di Filippo, COVID-19 update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Okay. I was told to take some notes, so I did. Just to let you know that Orange did reach its over 50% for the City of Orange, or approximately about 53% vaccinated, so this way we know. Our transmission rate is 1.5. We have about 2% of the Asian population vaccinated, 55% of the Afro-American vaccinated, 28% of the Latinos, 6% of the white, and we have 9% unknown. As you know, there's a lot of talk about the Delta virus with a booster shot. Before it even comes out, it has to be approved by FDA and CDC. As you know, the Delta virus mutates. It changes, and your, the vaccine that you get this year is probably not going to be the same that you get next year, okay? The percentage is down in your body, and also the variants probably change the vaccine. So eventually, you probably will get a booster, but it won't be, I don't think it'd even be close to this year. It'll probably be next year. So this way, you're aware of it. I know Pfizer's pushing it, so you know. Just a heads up, all the county buildings and the schools, the colleges are mandating that they wear masks inside, so this way you have heads up on that. So this way, you know what's coming down the pipe. In Orange, we have about 53%. Like I said, we're over 50%, so we're close to 53%. I'm going to give you some statistics, so this way you know. Not to change the, what we're talking about, but we do have a case of West Nile virus in Essex County, so this way you know summertime is here. Let me give you some numbers. The ages from 12 to 17, we have 29%. 18 to 29 years old, we have 48%. 30 to 49, we have 56%. 50 to 64, we have 76%. These are people that are vaccinated. 65 to 79, 90%, 80 and over, we have 80%. Now, these statistics are given to us by the county, so we're taking what they tell us, because our people are getting vaccinated, people that are getting vaccinated there, that's the information that we're getting. Not to change the course again, don't forget summertime is here, our pools are open, and just to give you heads up, just this last month alone, we had about four dog bites. So just please watch when you're walking. Don't pet a dog if you have to. It's real hot out there. Ask permission first from the owner of the animal if you could pet him, and dog bites are reported. A physician has to report it within 24 hours by law. So is there any questions you want to ask me?
Councilmembers?
Council President?
Councilwoman Summers, and Ms. Johnson?
Um, I would like to thank you, Councilwoman Easton, for all of these pop-up vaccination sites and the city, because all of the, most of the New Jersey colleges are requiring the students, if they're going to live on campus, so you witnessed me with my oldest son who acted like the shot was, like, going to hurt. But again, I thank you for doing it at Bravo. I saw many of the workers in Bravo come out, so I just think as a city, I think we're doing a really good job, and are residents still able to call the Health Department to get appointments? What is the process?
The pop-up sites, you can mostly just go there. You can call for an appointment. They would like it, but for the last, I think, is it three weekends, Councilwoman Easton, we had the barber shop on Lincoln Avenue, and there were drawing, believe it or not, a nice crowd.
That's good.
You're talking over 40 people the first time, over 30 people the second time.
Okay.
And they were just at our park last Sunday.
Okay.
That Central Playground.
Central Playground, right.
So I think, did they get over 25, 30 people?
Uh, I think they got about 20.
Okay.
But they did a lot of testing.
So 20 is better than nothing.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, and we'll be at Bravo Supermarket this Friday from 10 to 2.
Okay.
So this is our second shop program that we're there, and eventually, there's probably going to be more pop-ups.
So if they come on Friday, I know my son is coming on Friday for the second shot.
Yeah.
But if they come on Friday and they get their first shot?
There'll be another.
There'll be another one, okay.
They could go to another clinic.
Okay. And just tell them you need to.
They could be at Bravo's. It could be at Central Playground. It could be at College Park.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to try to see if we can get them to come at the school. It would be nice.
Okay.
Before school opens, we're going to have to ask, maybe have a special request from someone on council to make a phone call. If we could get them to come at Central before they open up, it'd be nice to get the kids vaccinated. It'll be an incentive. Park right in front of the middle school.
Okay.
On Central Avenue, so.
Thank you, Council President. Council President?
You're welcome. Council Vice President?
I just want to add to, Vinnie, did you bring, did you get the state results so that we could see why they're requiring, did you, did you get the state results?
Regarding our percentage, 53% that we were.
Yeah, for the whole state?
We're, we're past the 50% mark. We're over 53%.
But I know, but for the black and brown people, for the state, we're only at 7.2%. That's why I was asking you to see if you could get those so that.
I got the results from the county, like the breakdown in our community. We were at 55%.
I know, I know, but somehow, sometimes it's good for us to compare in the state so people understand why they're requiring everybody to continue to wear a mask. And also, on the website, the mayor had posted, I sent him, there is locations for the 5th, the 6th, the 7th, and the 8th of August, so anybody that requires a shot can look on the website, and you can go to any of those locations. You do not have to have an appointment. You can take, they were taking walk-ins, and also, for every site that's open there for vaccinations, they will do COVID testing. So they're doing that also at these sites. And I just want to say for the record, and I know a lot of people concerned about opening, the City Hall opening, but we've got to get back to normal. The only way we're going to get back to normal is with everybody get vaccinated. So I'm encouraging you to encourage your friends, your relatives, get the vaccination. We were all fearful at first, but it's okay, because it is working, and it will help us to open up, because I really don't think they're requiring that the schools open up, the kids go back to school, the teachers go back to school, but then we still have residents saying, I don't want to take the vaccination, but I want my kids to go to school. But the teachers are just as fearful as you are. You better tell them. So we want to protect them and everybody else, so we're encouraging you to get the vaccination. And one of the examples I used was that when people say they're vaccinating or getting COVID, we really don't know that to be true, because if somebody asks you if you took the test and you want to do something, you're going to say yes. But if they're not asking for proof that you took the vaccination, you can, you don't have to be telling the truth, so maybe that's why you got COVID. But please, we're going to continue this fight. We're going to continue to be at the sites. On the 14th of August, there's going to be a health fair at Washington Dade, and they'll also be doing COVID tests and vaccines. So please, if you can, anybody that's listening, let's all get our vaccinations so that we can protect each other and our families. And they're offering the three vaccines, so either whatever your choice is for that day, or whatever your choice is, they will have it on site. They're carrying all three with them to man.
Councilmembers, any other questions?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Ross?
How you doing, Vinnie?
Okay.
Um, thank you, and you guys are doing a good job with the vaccinations in the city. My concern and my question is, South Ward is having, is being inundated with deer, okay? There's deer all around in the South Ward. Has there been any issues or any complaints about lice or Lyme disease?
No.
Okay.
We have West Nile virus. Matter of fact, before we came here, I went out in the house, I'll tell you, I'll tell you where the street is, on Marsh Street, and the person in the back made a complaint, and I was looking around. I couldn't see it, and I told the, I'm off this week. I had the Animal Control Officer go there to verify it, and I went there before the meeting, and there was about 25 tires. So the tires are just sitting back there with the rain we had. They're just breeding mosquitoes. So, but nothing about the deer. And don't forget, it doesn't just have to be a deer. Ticks can fall off a rabbit, a skunk, a rat, it could be off anything, so.
And these dog bites that you mentioned earlier, any rabies, when they had rabies shots?
Not in Essex County at this time.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions for Health Officer? Vinnie, I just had one. I get a lot of inquiries about people who lost their card, their COVID-19 vaccination card.
Yes.
Um, what would be the best way for them to get a duplicate card?
Okay, you can request it to the NJISS. I think Lisette has a copy of the address on there. She'll be more than happy to call our office. But don't forget, this card is now available through your family care doctor, your primary care doctor. That's recorded, that you've been immunized. So you could pull up, pull it up on his computer, and he'll see you've been vaccinated. Same thing with mumps, smallpox, measles, so that's all on there. So this way, you know, but there's a website. You can pull it up. I think, is it on there, Lisette, on my note?
Yeah.
Okay, so they could post it up for you, or just call up our office, and we'll get you the link to do it.
Okay, thanks.
The primary care doctor also has access to that information.
Can I get posted on that website?
You want to get it posted?
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So on tonight's agenda, we have three potential walk-ons, and the BA is going to explain the three walk-ons.
The first walk-on authorizes an application and acceptance of an award from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Neighborhood Preservation Program. It's primarily an application for a grant that has to be filed by the end of the month. Uh, the person working on the grant thought that we would have a second meeting in August. So I had this prepared for this evening, since there's no second meeting. The second is a resolution that, if you remember back in two thousand nineteen, we did a capital bond ordinance, and within that capital bond ordinance was an authorization to do a citywide camera program. The state has subsequently mandated body cameras for police. So this resolution is asking to reappropriate or change the purpose of the authorization for the camera system to include the body cameras, which will also be tied into the communication system. There's no additional funds, it's simply moving funds from one specific purpose to another. The third ordinance is a capital ordinance. Um, in the budget that you adopted, there's a capital improvement fund, Public Works Department needs some equipment. It is a power washer, and this is a appropriation from the capital improvement fund to purchase that power washer.
Council President? Is that, that last walk-on, is it available on the table? Can I grab one on the table?
Is it, I'm sorry, is it available to the public?
Yeah.
I'll give him a copy.
I have to ask Joyce.
Madam clerk?
It's three eighty twenty twenty-one, it should be out on the table, or you should have received the copy. You gave him a copy, right?
It's three eighty twenty-one?
Yeah, it's three eighty twenty twenty-one.
All right, I'll get one. I got, I got two via email, the third one I didn't get.
Okay, well, while we wait for you to get that third one, are there any resolutions or ordinances on tonight's agenda that the council wish to discuss?
Council members, any resolution ordinances that need to be discussed?
Madam clerk?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second, Johnson Junior.
Motion by Councilmember Easton, second by Councilmember Johnson Junior. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township held in Council Chamber, City Hall, twenty-nine North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Wednesday, August fourth, twenty twenty-one, following the conference meeting. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance led by the Council President. Roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
President?
Councilmember Montague III?
Here.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wooten?
Here.
Council President Coley?
Present.
Also present is Joyce Lanier, the City Clerk, Lisette Sanchez, the Deputy City Clerk, Chris M. Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Laquana Best, the Planning Director, Chief Long, Fire Department, Adrian Matt, Finance Director, Marty Mays, Public Works Director, Alvin White, Deputy City Attorney, Todd Warren, the Police Director, he's in the hallway, and Chief Vinnie, Vinnie Vidiello, both in the hallway. Niall Clements, Chief Financial Officer, Marlin G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer, and Tamara Robinson, City Clerk's Office. The requirements of NJSA ten colon four dash nine et cetera, sunshine law has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Record Transcript, published in the Star Ledger on July second, twenty twenty-one, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, on the council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the City Clerk. At that, this time, we're going to suspend the rules.
Yes, we have a, some citizens from seven forty-nine Scotland Road that has some, some issues that they want to discuss.
So can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Easton?
Second, Johnson Junior.
Second by, I don't know if it was Councilmember Summers Johnson, Johnson Junior. Second by Councilmember Johnson Junior. On that motion, seeing on roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Okay, we suspended the rules.
Okay, um, is there anyone from seven forty-nine Scotland Road want to step to the mic? And with your name and your address and kind of go over with what you're here for?
Uh, hi, my name is Courtney, I live at seven forty-nine Scotland Road, apartment one K. And I am the president of the tenant association of the building, I have a few, a lot of us here that's representing at seven forty-nine Scotland Road, and we're just fed up. And I've been dealing with Code Enforcement, Corbett, Omar, also Norman, for the, since two thousand nineteen, and I'm not getting anywhere. So I'm fed up, and I figure that if, as a president, I can speak for a hundred and ten units. But obviously, we're not getting anywhere, so I really hope that today, starting today, we can get some answers. So I forgot my glasses at home, so I'm kind of living about that.
You want to take it down?
Okay, all right, so we are in dire need of your support. We have been dealing with these, we have been dealing with these issues since two thousand and nineteen. Again, I've been dealing with Corbett, Omar, about these tasks at hand, and thought by me submitting the complaints, I've sent them emails, I blind them, so therefore they're never, not informed, all right? I thought, again, I thought it would be easier if I do instead of everyone doing it at one time. Um, I really believe that this new ownership that's called Rushmore Management, they take in Orange City as a joke. They looking at us like we're nobody and treat us like we're nobody, and it's just unfair. Again, I have been sent, received repeated emails. These tenants that are here, their appliances are not working, they need new tubs. They have sprayed the current tubs and the molds and the, the, um, the, 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 the mildew still comes right back in. The circulation of the bathrooms, Corbett has said, okay, the vent is not working. And then Julian, who is the manager of Rushmore Management, he looks at him and just laugh. One day he visited my mother, apartment five E, and he said something in Spanish, and I really didn't like that. So I, as her daughter, approached him and asked him, whatever you got to say, you make sure you say it in English, so we can all understand. So there won't be no misunderstanding. So therefore, um, the air is really, um, it's really bad in our bathrooms. The grounds are currently dirty, the front, the back. So when you enter seven forty-nine, it may look like the Taj Mahal. Because the back, the, is, is, is mauled, I mean, longed and all that stuff. But come to the back, come to the sides, and you'll see all the trash back there. Lately, they have been dumping the trash. So we have two dumpsters, right? But now they got a bigger dumpster that's out there, because what they trying to do is trying to get the new, the old tenants out, so they can get the new tenants in, so therefore, that's why they got this extra dumpster that dumps up all their, um, they do, to enter new appliances inside. Also, there's tenants, I complained, there's tenants throwing garbage out of their balconies. I asked for cameras to be put in, in the building, then come to find out, City Hall said, I want to see the hall, said, you guys said it's not mandatory, so I do understand that. Cigarettes, black butts, all on the grounds, because the previous, um, super, he used to smoke and then never cleaned it up, because they treated them like crap, so now they want to treat the tenants like crap, because they didn't treat the supers like crap. We get no response from Rushmore. Every time I send an email, I get nothing. I sent it repeatedly, repeatedly, no response. I sent it to, again, to Code Enforcement, nothing. Currently, we have a hundred and ten units in our building. We have no super on the premises. We have no phone calls that we can go and reach out to them just in case of emergency. They are taking the basements, they're making apartments out of a basement. Currently, apartment G five was a storage room, and the third tenant, I told Omar, please, they're about to rent another tenant in there. The, the shower is, um, backed up, they can't brush the teeth. The last tenant, he was disabled, he could not take a shower because of his leg, because the leg could have got affected. That's not how somebody's supposed to live. Now, everybody don't own houses, so therefore we do have a right to rent. So therefore, we do have rights to tenants. I have nowhere to go to to find out, where do we, section five, three, five, four, you talk about the seven thousand million dollars budget, where can we go when the tenants rights? And we have no directions. I have seen the mayor in Walgreens. I have not said, he said he's going to do this, do that. I spoke to Adrian, we need you guys help desperately, right? Because I'm pissed about right now, right? So therefore, we have a pool in the back. I've been living in that building for over twenty-five years. The pool has, telling tenants, the tenants, the, the pool is nicely decorated, people sneaking in there at night, dumping it, and we, the pool has not been opened. We, we have a right to have the pool open. I'm asking the people here at the council place, when this is over? I would like for my tenants to get ahead and fill out a complaint, so we can take them to this ma- matter in court and have five months of rent taken off, because they can increase our salary for fifteen, for, um, five percent, because that's the law, but we still not getting nowhere with them. And then also, they added a gym in the basement, right? Then they asked us, do you want to pay a hundred dollars in a gym? Was that approved? We never had a gym. Welcome, we may need to do some exercise and lose weight, I really understand that. Also, our, our rent receipts are in the door, anybody can come and look at our rent receipts. We used to have it mailed or emailed. They still put the, they make sure they put the rent receipts in there, but they don't want to put nothing, they don't want to do no, um, no maintenance in our apartments. It's really sad. The water pressure, there's no water pressure. Omar told me that, correct me if I'm wrong, they say the city says that they had decreased the water pressure. That's why when y'all brush y'all teeth, there's not enough water coming out, we running, we, we doing all, all that stuff. The doors, our lobby doors, we can't even buzz anybody. My neighbor here, Ann, lives on the first floor. She got to stroll out there and let somebody in her door, it is just not right. We cannot buzz anyone in, it's just unfair. I asked, I said to Corbett, we need our basement doors repaired. They repaired one door. And the other doors are broken. As a woman, anyone can get ahead and come behind me or do anything, it's so unsafe. I've been complaining, I'm getting, since two thousand and nineteen, right? Um, the work orders, that we can't get no work orders, they, again, they ignore us. The mice in the building is out of control. We do not have an exterminator, they don't want to give us the exterminator, right? I asked for a, um, a, a doorstopper for the bottom, because guess what? The mice is running out of the hallways and right into the building, right into your apartment. I said, can I please get a, a mice doorstopper, because check it out, the mice been biting at my door. So finally, in four years, I haven't had mice, but guess what? They're, they're back. And therefore, they have not, again, have any exterminator inside the building, going on three years. It's so unfair. Again, seven forty-nine looks nice on the outside, but it's a different story when you come visit our building. I truly believe currently, they are about to change hands again, right? Because, and they don't, they don't owe you, or they, they, the cousin, the brother, the uncle, they the one that get ahead and change hands, right? So therefore, when they want to look or sell the apartment, they want to knock on my doorbell and say, well, can we look at your apartment? Yeah, I try to keep a decent apartment, but I'm afraid to have company. Why? Because my carpet needs to be repaired, tennis in here, their carpet's been there for over twenty years, and they still can't get it. And I've said to them, oh, well, you think because we're the new owners, you are entitled to all this? No, because the last super says, I'm not putting no new carpets in your house because we're about to get, because of new owners, let them fix it, right? So the state even came to us and said to us, if you, he told me, the man said, if I want results, only person that can do it is your guys. You guys are supposed to help us. I do this for free, I volunteer. Why do I volunteer? Why? Because God says that I should give back, right? But y'all guys get paid for it. Corbett, Omar, and whoever it is, y'all riding on your car, people see y'all. And especially this, Corbett lives right across the street from seven forty-nine Scotland Road. Even if he gets off at four o'clock, he should be able to knock on my door, because I work, work from home now because of the Corbett, Corb, I mean, because of COVID, thank God for that. So he can read my doorbell, and he can say, well, Courtney, how's it going in the building? But no, he just rather just go inside. If any building should be up to par, up to code enforcement in seven forty-nine, because he live right across the street from it. The, the, the snow pile, um, it's the, it's summer, the winter is about to come. And I asked, our current parking lot has been paved, but it's owned by the New York Car Parking. And we asked them, are you responsible to pave, are you responsible to shove the snow? They say no, because they didn't want, well, we couldn't even go, or they did a one little two-step pad. It was very dangerous this past winter, and we do not want to ever, ever go back that, do all that stuff again. So again, as a seven forty-nine, I live in apartment one K, only thing I'm asking for is the mice stop coming and a doorstopper and a new carpet, and I still can't get that. I'm just livid right now. On top of that, I'm going to say this in closing, because a lot of tenants do not know this, but I'm going to share with the tenants. Because I am the president of the tenant association, I started putting, um, stuff in the, in the doors and letting them know we have a tenant association meeting. And then I said, my, my neighbor who had moved, his, his house is, is, is running down like it's a waterfall, like he's at a, a, a museum or some shit like that. And, and the owner told me, he says, guess what? I don't need you to write any more emails for anyone. And then when I said it, I said this last time, it was from my mother. I said, don't you dare tell me, I cannot send emails regarding my apartment or my mother's apartment. So they sent a lawyer after me. They told me cease and desist, because we do not want you to walk around here, this building anymore. We do not want you to talk to the super anymore. A white man named Mark, he was an addict, he stole all our packages. But because we didn't have no camera, and then a, then in the middle of the night, he's sleeping out there, and he's gone, he's no longer there. Currently, again, we do not have a super on the premises. We have a hundred and ten units. If anything happens, there's nothing. So I asked, what is the law? I can't go around, people have block associations, people have tenants and stuff like that, we don't get anywhere? This is so unfair. So I'm asking y'all, please help us at seven forty-nine Scotland Road. Tell me, Courtney, I can't do this for you, so, so we can't do this for us, please give us some answers. That's all we asking for. So don't let today fall on deaf ear. So I asked me to say, so there's many seven forty-nine Scotland Road tenants to come out here to share. People stove doesn't work, the others, it's just so sad the way we live. Yes, I understand they want us out, but check it out. We ain't going nowhere. Why? Because the rent today is too damn high. We doing good for our money, all right? So only thing I'm asking y'all, again, is to please help us. And my name is Courtney.
Courtney, thank you very much, and I'm really, really sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that you are living under and in these conditions. Um, I'm going to ask our BA if he can do a sidebar with you.
He did.
Um, so he can direct the necessary, um, resources, uh, 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 to you and to, um, your, 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 your building, seven forty-nine Scotland Road. Uh, I'm shocked, I really am. I'm shocked to hear this.
Yes.
I'm shocked. So Mr. BA, um.
Council President?
Yes.
If I'm going back history, pre, um, business administrator, this building was in trouble years ago. This didn't just start. So one of the things Councilman Ross has been asking, and part of it is, we do not have a rent leveling board that's active anymore. Because I remember the written leveling board was going through and trying to make sure that everything was there and everything was taken care of. But, so, we need to make that active as soon as possible. And I know you said earlier in the meeting that, so we need to get the rent leveling board back up and running, because I know Sandy Mason, you remember Sandy Mason?
That was my girl, we always communicated with her.
Yeah, and Sandy usually would address all of their concerns for seven forty-nine. But I guess for the last, what, two or three years, it hasn't had a meeting. But I guess for the last, what, two or three years, it hasn't had a meeting for the rent leveling board. So as soon as we can, we need to make sure that board is active. And for any council members that has appointments on them, I know there's um, I've lifted those some from the south ward. I'm putting on the landlord as um, order as soon as possible. And I think we can start the process this week, working through that to make sure we get the rent leveling board up and running and they have somebody to complain to, that we the council and the city can hold accountable for what's happening at seven forty-nine.
And I can say one more thing, they also tacking on fees that don't belong. I believe that the, the law says that we can only go five percent. That's because we pay our utility, because thank God we can run our air conditioner all day long. Hey, go up five percent. But now they tacking on fourteen dollars. And I'm asking them, why are you tacking on fourteen dollars? And they says, because it's part of your lease. I called the eight hundred number and they said it's for insurance. The longer I've been living in this building, we never had to have insurance for the building. So Norman, who I've been talking to, she told me, she says, Courtney, don't pay the fourteen dollars. But I'm not paying the fourteen dollars, but they still adding on my rent. So she said she was gonna contact the lawyer, I think that's the lawyer my deal with the drags? Are you the lawyer? Because we had met before, sir, and you have promised him that you was gonna do something about us, and you have not. We have sat down when the COVID started helping, and you asked him and you said, here. One of my neighbors have also communicated with you. We have also said that you gonna va- uh, you going to um send them fines and violate. But y'all not, y'all sending them violations and giving them time, like hit the pockets. They can still afford it, even if you do fifteen hundred dollars apartment, they can still afford it. Don't sit down and do a hundred dollar fine, then they really gonna look at us like we're nobody. So we got to get, we got to, we, listen, we just asking to live decent.
Courtney, you, you, your voice and your words, you know, and your issues is, has been received loud and clear. And I, I, I'm gonna ask our BA to do a complete condition assessment analysis of seven forty-nine Scotland Road to find out what is going on and what can the city do with the current laws that are in place to improve the quality of life of you and your residents of seven forty-nine Scotland Road.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just put someone on the rent leveling board. I didn't know that it wasn't an active committee, because the letter that she received from the city clerk said that they didn't meet, I think only two months, three months because of COVID, right?
That was the zoning board that I was talking about.
Oh, no, because that was rent, that's rent leveling that I put Jessica, that I put Jessica, okay. We definitely need that.
All right. Well, Courtney, um, did you exchange information with the BA? He have all your contact information?
And I will send him all the emails.
All right, all right.
And also Corbett supervisor I met, she ain't here, but um, she here?
Good, unless she on the back, pretty girl on the back.
All right. Thank you for sharing.
I don't know if anybody else got to share, but we hungry.
Approval of meeting minutes, May fourth, twenty twenty-one conference and regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt?
Madam Clerk, move second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, second by Councilmember Montague the Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one conference and regular meeting minutes. Motion to adopt?
Move Johnson Junior.
Second, Ross.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Department monthly revenue connect, collections. The Historic Preservation Commission collected for the month of June, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Council reports. Richard Noisy for the month of June, twenty twenty-one. He did um volunteer June fifth, thirteenth, and twenty-seventh. Oprah reports for the month of June, it was a hundred and thirty-five Oprah requests received, one hundred and twenty-one completed and fourteen pending. Council reports.
Anything from the finance committee?
Uh, Ms. Lanier, we didn't, we went through the package, but there was no concerns about any of the uh, on this, the resolutions. We discussed them and uh Chris Hartwick explained them to, so we're good.
Okay.
And I think, and I think uh Ms. Hanlon also went through the package and she sent her notes and made her corrections, which is already part of the agenda.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Since this is a new um, a year for us, don't, aren't we supposed to be putting new people on these committees? Like we just, we're gonna vote for people to be on certain committees tonight, right?
You mean citizens, are we talking?
Citizens, so at, so once we vote, then they're on the committee, and then we put new people on the committee, right?
Well, I believe those, if they're good for like twelve months, um, people are.
So is it twelve months or is it new, is it a new tenure whenever we start?
I think it's best to look at the resolution. I don't want to sit here and say something that it isn't. The best thing to do, just pull the resolutions and look at them. The individual resolution that appoint people.
Thank you.
Yep. Madam Clerk.
That's it for reports?
Yep.
Um, Fire Department, Police Department.
Okay. Chief Law, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Fire Chief Law, I'd like to give a brief update on the Fire Department.
Push the mic up.
I'm gonna take my.
The mic, yeah.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, push it up, yeah.
I'm a Fire Chief Gerard Law, I want to give the council a brief update on the Fire Department. And then I'll take some questions at the end. Uh, recently.
You gotta speak up or.
Uh, recently, there's been uh some promotion at the Fire Department. Uh, myself appointed to Fire Chief. And we have uh two deputy chiefs, Derek Brown and Joseph.
Point of order, Council President, point of order. Can we just wait until everybody exits?
Sure.
And so we can hear him. Just give him a couple of minutes and let them exit. Uh, the gentlemen, you guys either have to exit, exit or, and talk outside.
I'll just repeat, uh, I'll start over again. Can I continue?
Oh, one second. Yeah, one second, one second, chief.
Got to realize you also competing with the air conditioners.
I have a low voice as well, I apologize.
We, we're gonna toughen you up, don't worry.
Don't, don't have me scream fire.
Then you'll see me get louder than.
Yes.
All right, chief, I think we good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again. Uh, my name is Gerard Long, I'm the appointed Fire Chief for the City of Orange Township Fire Department. I just want to update the council uh on recent, and the, and the citizens for recent changes. Uh, we had three promotions. Uh, myself, we have two deputy fire chiefs promoted. And this is a move, a step in the right direction. Uh, I just want to say, uh, thanks to the mayor, business administrator Chris Hartwick. I want to thank the city council for your continued support, and I want to continue to support you. I want to thank my family for their support all the time away from home. But uh I just want to do what I can and move the department forward in a progressive direction. Uh, one of the good things I want to mention is that I'm actually from the town and grew up here. So it's my duty to uh give back the best way I can. So I just want to say that I'm here if you need me. You know, you have, I'll provide my contact information, if you don't already have it. And uh, I want to, I want to be there for you. Uh, just so you know, I'm in the process of evaluating the Fire Department in, in, in detail. Evaluating operations and response, evaluating the personnel and their talents. And we want to just try to see how we can use their talents to improve services in the city. So I'm gonna, I just started, but I would like uh to let you know that I'm, I'm analyzing the department uh fully. And I, and tough changes are gonna have to happen uh to the best of all ability. So those are the recent changes of the Fire Department. So I take any questions at this time.
Council President?
Councilman Montague.
I just want to congratulate uh Chief Long for this achievement, well deserved. And I see Orange going forward in the right direction. Um, the Fire Department's going in the right direction, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Council members, any other questions for the Fire?
No, I just, I'm just asking you to put Washington Street on your agenda, of things we're gonna take a look at.
I, I, I totally agree with you, Councilman Neeson, that is on the top of my agenda now that I'm in this position. And I would like to work with the city officials to discuss how we can uh make that happen.
And congratulations, again.
Yes, congratulations.
Council President?
Councilman Johnson.
Uh, congratulations, Chief Long, we, we, we talked to someone the other day, personal. And I'm, I appreciate uh, uh, you, you're on your promotion. Uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, are you gonna be attending most of the council meetings yourself, or you're gonna be sending a deputy?
I'm gonna attend the council meetings myself starting out. And I, you know, I want to be here to know what's going on in the city firsthand.
Okay, you, we, we just, when you, when you speak to us, we like to have some, some measurable items that you, that, that's part of your agenda. Uh, and, and you know, every ninety days or so forth, see if you hit some of the targets you set for yourself in the Fire Department. So when you speak to us in those terms, uh, you speak to us as if you doing a board meeting or something of that nature. And just give us, give us the, you know, the five O on what's really going on at the Fire Department and how we can help, help you out, okay?
Sure will.
Thank you.
I just want to add that, uh, if I can, if I may, uh, I've been meeting also with the Fire Director Douglas uh, to try to get things going on the right path. So I also want to thank him as well.
Council members, any other questions for uh our new Fire Chief?
If, if needed, I'll take this question.
Um, if, if you don't mind, like aside, you can take him outside and talk to him, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sir. Police? You have to wait for public comment, sir. Sir, sir, please. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, that was the one today. I have to excuse myself, I spilled something on my pants, so I'm a little bit messy, so. I'm not usually like that, so I apologize. I just, I just want to say, uh, congratulations to Chief Long and, and the man that performed that. Uh, I've worked with you for a long time, you're a great guy, I believe you're gonna do a wonderful job with the Fire Department. Just uh to go over a couple of things, not much to report, except National Light Out turned to be, turned out to be a success. All you guys there, we had a great time going in the community. I love the term unity with the community, because that's what we do have within our community. And I feel we're as one, and there's no separation between police and community, we're all as one. And you know what? I love that feeling, loved last night, and the guys loved it too. They, they loved just assimilating and hanging out and eating, that was great. And uh also, Miss Neeson, you had asked about the Narcan. So, we actually, the Special Operations Division has secured two hundred and seventy-eight more doses of Narcan that'll be used to combat our opioid epidemic. Now each dose, as administered, it's documented in a mapping system in order to provide data to further target specific areas, areas of need within our community. And we are currently working in a continuous partnership with the Essex County Prosecutor's Office. And Operation Helping Hands, like what I told you guys about, if anyone has a, a, a drug problem, they could go to this van and seek treatment, and there's no cops there, they're just in plain clothes. Uh, there's mental health care workers along with nurses who want to assist our citizens. And you know what? They love Orange, the people that do this for Helping Hands, because, you know, we've been getting a lot of cooperation with that. I also gave you guys a uh, a schedule of that and the locations in the packet, if you see that. And basically, that's all I have at, at this time. I mean, if you have any questions with, with the packet, feel free to ask.
Council members, any questions for our police chief?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
You two are the police chiefs. So these are the locations, two thirty-four, three fifty-seven, Ebenezer and Seventh Day Adventure?
Yes. No, 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 that's, that's uh for the meetings, community service meetings.
But what did you say about the van, uh, the um, where they could get help for drug addiction?
The van.
Where's it, where's it gonna be located?
Hold on, I think I, oh my gosh, I forgot to put it in here. Hold on, I had it in here. I'll get it to you guys, I'm sorry about that, I thought I had.
I, I see the information, but I just don't see where it's located.
I don't have it in mine. I'll check on that later. Also, I wanted to bring up one other thing I forgot, that there's gonna be a gun buyback in uh Saturday, August seventh, ten AM to four PM. It's gonna be in Atlantic City, East Orange, Newark, and Patterson. And that's in the pack out, well, in the package also in East Orange, it's gonna be at the New Vision Baptist Church, one hundred Warington Place, and in Newark at the Prudential Center, twenty-five Lafayette Street, Lafayette Street.
Oh, can I finish my question?
Yes.
So the Narcan now is gonna be in each, each patrol car, right?
Yes, each officer is issued a Narcan pack. And when they use it, the replenish. With the time, the location, and the officer, and how many times you deploy it. Because unfortunately, there's been several times where we have to deploy one, more than one Narcan. To get an individual, an individual revived.
On a light note, did you like my tablecloth?
What's that?
Did you like my tablecloth?
Yes, I did. I saw it. I liked it.
I, I told you, I was gonna decorate, clean you guys up a little bit.
Very nice.
But um.
We appreciate it.
But one of the concerns I have is with the homeless. And last night I was calling around because I think there's a guy in your apartment, I were trying to find a facility to, to send him to. I think he was just recently became homeless and, and he's a pretty decent man. So if anybody knows of any place where we can send, and not to drop him off at a location, but to send him someplace where they can have a roof over their head and a bed to sleep in and um some services that can help them get back on their feet. So if you got any recommendations, let me know.
Well, we have locations in headquarters that are given to the patrol units if they do come across, say, homeless individual. But a lot of times they have to be willing to go.
But the, the one in the parking lot, I think he's willing, we're just trying to find someplace that, that he feels.
Which parking lot? Because I'll, I'll send somebody over there right now.
No, no, he's in the police park, because I, every day he's sitting on a bench.
Oh, you, you mean, yes.
Yeah. From Colgate. So we're trying to.
Yeah, we, we've.
So one of your officers asked me.
Yes.
Yesterday, and they feel sorry because, you know, he's a clean cut looking man. He just needs a location and someplace to, um.
You know what? We'll, we'll work on speaking with him, maybe we can get him in, into one of these facilities where you speak to somebody.
Yeah, so.
And get some help.
So I'm saying to the public, if anybody knows of any place that we can utilize, and I guess through our business administration, when we go forward to our next budget, I don't know how we would do this. We need to find some type of resources that we can help them with, maybe a temporary shelter or something that's clean and efficient. Um, because, uh, it does, because I just feel bad for anybody sleeping on the streets, that's not a good, good thing, so.
Council members, any other questions for the chief?
I'm good, thank you.
I just had one, um, I think the last meeting, I asked you maybe me, uh, two ago, um, because of, you know, how DMV, um, hours are and their locations, and hours are up and down. Um, if we can get, like, DMV to dispatch one of their, uh, mobile, um, units, um, to the area.
We reached out and.
One moment, let me respond to that. We have a schedule, I'm bringing them on the, I've already done that. It's in the works, we, we're bringing them on the ninth of September. And on Monday the seventeenth, we're gonna have one vehicle at St. Matthews parking lot. On the ninth of September, we're gonna have two vehicles to do motor vehicles. So I'm just waiting for the package and then we will promote it. They can only do fifty people per day because they have one vehicle.
Any appointments, unnecessary, uh, no, not inspections, I'm talking about full-fledged, uh.
Full-fledged, full-fledged. They will set up, they will set up the guidelines and they're gonna take the first fifty, and they have about forty on standby. I had to find a location, so I asked my pastor and he said it was okay because he has a huge parking lot. So I'm just waiting for her to give me the signed documents and the package where we can set up the appointments. And they will do it all.
Thank you so much.
And then people will just, and then they will decide who's coming and.
Yep.
On the ninth, we will be able to do a hundred people because we have two vans.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I too.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I mean, this Nutley has a white and orange.
That's right.
Yep. And.
But can I ask you one other question? I think I was gonna ask you, how is reentry going? Do we get any information on reentry?
Yes, the Director Warren and, and Pastor Ferguson handled reentry and, and they've been actively, uh, working on that. But I could, I could talk to them and get your report for the next council meeting.
Please do, I think I've been asked it for, for at least six months.
Okay. Not me?
No, not you.
And.
I get it.
And one more thing, uh, just to add to the, um, I guess the homeless issue, um, Central Avenue in Oakwood, um, by the gas station, this is one person, uh, she, she, I think I mentioned this to the B.A., um, a time or two, um, something has to be done because she, I don't know if it's she or he, but this person, um, just destroyed, um, those two benches on the, uh, east and west side of, uh, Central Avenue. I don't know what, I don't know what we can do. I mean, it's a whole gamut of, uh, social service, um, that this person needs. Maybe they received them before and didn't, and didn't want them, I don't know, but, um, it's just horrible.
Well, listen, Ron, though, when Helping Hands does come out, before they come out, I'm gonna talk to them. Maybe they have more resources.
Yeah, yeah.
To assist us in this, and, and I think they'd be a good, uh, an avenue to explore.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Collet, I, isn't that a, when we approached that person, I think it's a man, isn't it?
I, I, I don't know.
St. Matthews approached them to give them some food and they didn't want us to come near them.
Yeah, they.
And they finally.
They gave the.
Found out it was, it was a male there, and I, so, but he has both sides full of garbage.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I know. All right, chief, thank you, always a pleasure, sir.
Thank you, it's, it's a pleasure, and just one last thing I leave you guys with. Remember our tip line, please, any information, it's handled twenty-four seven. Nine seven three, six six six, zero zero nine seven. Nine seven three, six six six, zero zero nine seven. All calls are confidential.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Ross.
Uh, I'm Chief Vinnie. Um, since you mentioned the tip line, um, I know we had some issues with the dispatchers. Have that been resolved?
Yes, and, and in the process. And I, I can speak to you sidebar later if you want me to, um, because, uh, there's still ongoing internal investigation, so.
Okay.
But yes.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Council Press?
Councilman Johnson, yes, sir.
In fact, if I may, can I ask, uh, Director Mays a question? I'd like, I'd like to see him, uh, walk the plank down that center aisle. I got a quick.
Director Mays, that's you in the back.
I got, I got a quick question, I ain't, haven't talked to him in a while. The Orange Tornado Walk down the center aisle.
Tornado's in the house.
Marty Mays, DPW?
Director Mays, I, I have a quick question, I got a call from a constituent today that actually stumped me. Um, our bulk day in, in West Four is, uh, is on Fridays. And she, she has some, um, old, uh, lawn furniture that is wrought iron. And I think she says she read in the pamphlet that, that she just can't put it out on a Friday. Do we need to call in to your department to, or the wrought iron with the cushions and everything?
They should take that as regular.
They should take that.
What's the address, you know?
Um, cor- corner of Carter Vet Place and Carter Vet Terrace, on the north side of the street. She'll have the stuff, I'll call her first thing in the morning.
Tell her to put it out?
She'll have her son put that stuff on Friday, and, and, and I don't want to see it get left.
Yeah, text me her address, I could follow up.
Okay, you got it, man.
Well, give her my number, whatever you feel.
No, we'll take care of it, long as you take care of it. Uh, I'll, I'll call them first thing in the morning and tell them that she can authorize her son to put it out Thursday night.
They should take that as a matter, of course.
Okay.
As long as it's not construction debris or material, she's fine.
Right.
Old furniture, doesn't matter if it's wrought iron, wood, whatever, they should take it.
She was referring to, uh, the trifold pamphlet, I don't know if she had an old one or I, I didn't, I didn't read that in there myself, but I figured out, I would just ask you tonight.
Put it out and, and let me, give me her address, I could follow up.
Okay, you got it, thank you, man.
There's no communications and petitions, citizen comments. Pursuant to section four dash ten of the Code of the City of Orange Township, each person addressed in the council shall step up to the microphone, shall give his or her name and address in an audible tone for the record, and unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit his or her address to five minutes. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Uh, Hannah Davis, is she still here? James Ward?
Hello, council members, uh, my name is James Ward, seven four three Haxton Avenue. I'm here to, uh, address a couple of things that I've addressed before, uh, this will sound familiar. Tonight, we're here for the second time in a row in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, returning to in-person meetings with no Zoom link available. We spent seventy thousand dollars this year upgrading our technology services so that we can have good and proper meetings online. We did this this year. And we're not using it, we're wasting taxpayers' money. We need to have these meetings online so that the public can feel safe here. You guys are inside of Plexiglas and wearing masks for a reason. This room is over capacity for COVID distancing. We have a problem, we need to change that. Secondly, uh, a two percent plus one point four percent tax increase, uh, is a blaring indication of poor bookkeeping. We have a problem with our finances here, and we know this. This has been repeated many times before, but I will say it again. We've increased our, our tax rate every single year for the last decade. And it's, and it, and we ask for increases that are beyond the two percent cap because we have poor bookkeeping. When I asked the question last year about overtime, I asked for an Oprah request for all of the time sheets for two thousand and twenty. And it wasn't given because they said we had no time sheets last year. But yet, people are making ten, twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in overtime, and we don't have time sheets. How is this acceptable? Uh, regarding the recent crime uptick, this is the second FBI, uh, outside investigation in the city of Orange. I'm sure you all are familiar with what's going on on Elmond Drive. There's an FBI investigation currently happening here because of another issue that we keep repeating, that there are homes that are abandoned that are not being secured by the property owners. That owner is known, we found his address very easily. He pays his taxes every year for that house on the corner of Elmond and South Center. But the house is completely derelict, why are we not going after these people? Not to mention, he's been paying about ten thousand dollars a year in, in taxes. How is that possible for a land that, that is two acres? I pay more than that for a quarter of the space just for my land only, how is that possible? Um, our, our councilwoman, Jamie Summers, did a cleanup there last year. We paid for that. Why are we paying when this guy is just living in Boston and not taking care of this property? This is unacceptable. Um, we need to pose probably a higher tax rate on some of these properties that are, that are derelict, or find them, do something to make them respond. It's been mentioned many times that our average police response is less than one minute. When we called the police for the incident that happened on Haxton Avenue last month, uh, I checked my cameras. And I also checked the corroborating stories with my three other neighbors that also called nine one one. It's about six minutes, just so that we know, uh, what the truth is here. It's not that, that, that there's anything wrong there, but there was a repeated issue with having to call and hang up and call again because we have to retrain the nine one one operators. Or just fire them. This has been an issue since before I came here. My neighbors have been telling me about this, they said, at least for a decade. And the individual who's doing this is known. We've asked, uh, a repeated Oprah report question that we've not gotten a clear answer about. Uh, we've gotten an answer, it was not a clear answer. What is the police-to-resident ratio here in Orange? Uh, this has not been answered to the public. And regarding revenue, uh, our consistent revenue sources are property taxation. When there are many other places that we can get revenue. We said here, in a council meeting, well, online, um, we asked the question about the meters that are all over town. There are ninety-plus meters that are not functional. And they haven't been functional for at least a decade. So why are we increasing our taxes when we are not going after resources that are right here? You can park on Main Street anywhere and not pay. That's unacceptable. Skyland Road Two. One last thing regarding the resolution for the four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of bonded debt. Uh, if we don't need it, let's just return it, bonds are loans, and we're paying it.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Courtney Parks, uh, she is gone. Charles Pryor?
Good evening, council members, good evening, uh, residents.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
I ran home and changed, as many of you saw me earlier, I was here for the finance committee meeting and had to get my daughter home so that she could rest, so she can go to camp tomorrow. I am here for one reason and one reason only, um, I understand that you guys are taking off the table, uh, the cannabis legislation. And, um, my concern is, sitting on the finance committee, being a new resident to this town, having been in education, um, for the past twenty-plus years, I know I don't look that old, but I've, I've been in education for about a quarter century and for the last ten years. Um, worked full-time in education, um, for the city of New York, um, as well as volunteered and a couple of other things. I've, I've really committed myself to, to giving back to the community, and I want to invest in Orange. Um, the reason why I'm here is I, I believe that we need to continue to plan, we need to continue to grow, we need to continue, continue to develop. The best, safest communities have the best resources. No offense to our public workers, I have brothers that are on the New York City Police Department, New York City Fire Department, in the FBI, and on the state police of New Jersey and New York. Um, but the safest and best communities don't have an abundance of those places that have an abundance of community service and community opportunities for young people to grow and develop and to learn. The reason why I'm talking to you now about cannabis and, and, and making that connection is, I think that we have an opportunity to make some money as a township. And my real concern is, as this was, and I voted for this to be legalized in the state of New Jersey, is if we pass on it, neighboring communities are not. And we're gonna be the last to the party. And you know what happens when you're last to the party? You don't get any snacks, you, the, the, the refreshment table is empty when you get there. I understand that, that some people are lying on their personal feelings and, and, and personal values, um, but it's, you know, we're not trying to open another bunny ranch. We're, we're literally talking about marijuana, which has been used legally in a number of states for a number of years. And the number of tax dollars that those states have been able to generate has shown positive returns. And I am simply asking for this group here to consider that as you make your vote this evening, so that we can continue to reinvest in our town. As I said, I moved here from the Bronx, from one of the toughest neighborhoods in that city. And I, you know, I got, I got a bunch of fancy book learning, I mean, if you see me in a shirt and tie, you see me right now in a hoodie. I, I, you know, I can do, I can do both, and I hang out with both. And I can tell you, growing up in the Bronx, being raised in Harlem, playing basketball and a couple of other, like I said, community events. When I was involved and engaged, is when I, I connected and plugged into school and other activities.
Yeah.
It could have very easily gone the other way. I had a number of opportunities, I had those uncles. You know what I'm saying? But because of community opportunities that were funded by public dollars and other donors and grantors, I was, I'm able to stand here before you today, like I said, twenty-five-plus years in education. Master's degree, bachelor's degree in engineering, and, and soon to be a doctorate in, in education. None of that is possible without the community opportunities that I had in my neighborhood and in and around New York City. And I think that Orange has a tremendous potential to be on par with many of those things, and in many ways to succeed all of those things. Why? Because we're two point two square miles of people that have invested in this place, raised families in this place, many of the people in my neighborhood, grandparents own their homes. So people don't leave here. So my, my, my plea to you today is, as you continue to be representatives of the people, think about your grandchildren, your children's grandchildren. And the economic opportunities that are available to us when things like this come along, so that we can reinvest in our community and reinvest in our future, which is our children. That is our greatest resource. Their growth, their development, and the opportunities that we make for them. As I said, I stand here, I have an older brother who's no longer with us. Because he got involved with drugs, he got involved with some not positive things. And so, raised in the same house, but I got involved in my community. And I stand here before you today, like I said, a product of those opportunities. And I ask you, as, not only this opportunity, but others that come down the line. You know, especially as we apply for grants, we apply for other donations and things like that, that you will take heavy consideration when those things come before you. As, like I said, I moved here two years ago. I plan to and hope to invest in Orange. And I hope that as these opportunities come forward, that you see those things as opportunities for growth and that you choose to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to suspend the rules for citizens' comments. We have one, uh, person who didn't sign the book and is, is requesting to ask a question. Is that Nashi McClary? That's, that's a R?
That is an R, sir.
Okay, look like an N. Um, Rashid McClary, understep up to the mic and give us your, your name and your address, please.
Appreciate the time, I, I, so my name is Rashid McClary, six eighty Mosswood Avenue, South Ward, Orange, New Jersey. Uh, I, I, thank you, chief. I thank you, chief, for being here and I look forward to seeing you at future council meetings. So my concern, you know, after hearing the chief speak and congratulations on your promotion, was why is it that some of the numbers on the city website, particularly that for the Fire Department, because I have called twice before, is either out of service or disconnected?
No number.
And if those vital numbers can not only be handed out in paper, posted, but updated on the website, that would be really appreciated. And if that can be briefed either, you know, between now and the next council meeting or on the website so that all of this information is up to date, that would be really helpful. If I may, ask an additional question that is unrelated to the Fire Department and Chief Matter, if you will permit.
Yes, sir.
So I've been in this particular city and ward now for five years and every year my taxes have gone up ten percent without fail. And I'm just trying to understand, what is the city trying to do to curb the rising tax rate, to keep homeowners both in their homes, seniors from losing their homes, and individuals wanting to invest, as the gentleman said earlier, in the city of Orange, while at the same time explaining, from my understanding, right, house reevaluations take place every ten years or so. We're now having one within seven years. How is that the case when taxes specifically have also gone up the rate over the last five years? Like, how do you juxtapose those two things and believe that this is going to be a viable community, not only for individuals to come invest, but to stay long-term? Thank you for the time.
Thank you. There's a motion to close citizen comments.
Motion to close, Madam Clerk.
Second, Summers Johnson.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second by Councilmember Summers Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council comments.
Council comments. Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Greetings. Yes, yesterday's neighborhood watch was really good. Every stop was great, seeing all the kids out and the community out. I was on the caravan and it was good as usual. Keeping with that same momentum, I've been meeting with various streets in the South Ward so that they could have a more intimate conversation with the police code enforcement and Public Works. The next meeting is for the Valley Community. And those of you that might be new to Orange and not know what the Valley Community is, it's anything below Scotland Road, from basically Argyle all the way over. And if you're not sure what ward you live in, you can email me from the website and I can help you with that. When you talked about, they talked about recreation programs. Both of my sons just finished T-ball and baseball. The city of Orange's baseball team won the championship against, in a Newark inner-city league. And when we talk about revenue, I paid twenty-five dollars for one son and twenty-five for the other, and they played baseball for three months for twenty-five dollars. So when we talk about revenue, that probably didn't even pay for the shirt, you know, that should have had sponsorship on the back. We definitely shouldn't be paying for those type things. We used to have banners where companies would give money so that basically that particular sport would pay for itself. We definitely need to get back to that. And I'm going to be having a recreation focus group on Wednesday, the eighteenth via Zoom, and flyers will be going out, it's from five-thirty to six-thirty, just to try to get some more ideas. I know I have my own because I do spend a lot of money on recreation outside of the city of Orange, and I would love to spend money in my own city. Residents have been asking me about leaf bags and recycling bins. So on Tuesday, August seventeenth, in Metcalf Park parking lot, I will be giving away recycling bins and leaf bags for Orange residents from four to six. Again, it'll be, I'll make sure the flyer is sent out. And also from the food bank, they'll be giving out food at the recycling bin and leaf bag giveaway. I've been working with Dr. Fitzhugh, Superintendent of Orange Schools, to help the seniors get community service hours. You can also contact me if you have a high school student that's an Orange resident that is in need of community service hours. They need that in order to graduate. I received several complaints from residents that, I guess, just found out they were in the historical section of Orange, and their biggest complaint is they would like some sort of signage that says it, but more importantly, grant money to fix their home because when you are in a historical society, the items that you must replace incur a cost. So we just, you just voted up taxes. So now, like, for example, I had a resident call me the other day, she has to replace a window that would have been like a hundred and something dollars, but because she's in a historical section and it has to match exactly, it's going to cost her anywhere between four and five hundred dollars. So for me, I don't think that's fair, and if it's no benefit of being in a historical section of the city of Orange, if it doesn't come with grant money, you know, I think residents are going to be upset. So I think that we need to really go after some grants for those homes because, like we talked about before, the grants that were given out by a private entity, I know South Ward and West Ward were excluded because we weren't in the heart of the city. Talking about taxes again, you just voted taxes up. So most of the complaints that I received from residents over the summer, I would say ninety percent of the complaints that I received this summer were about employees, lack of customer service. And I don't even know if there's a class that you can improve customer service because the kind of customer service that these residents are looking for is that work ethic that you have to be raised with, watching your parents go to work and trying to hold on to their job. And I just think that sometimes people walk around like they can't be fired. As a teacher, I'm evaluated three, four, or five times a year, and I have tenure, right? But I don't walk in there like, you can't fire me. And I just think that we really need department heads, taxes just went up, residents are going to be looking for better services. Mediocre stuff is not going to work. A new phone list did go out yesterday, each stop, we gave out the new list so that the residents would have it. Definitely needs to be accessible easily on the website. About Elman Drive, I know it's under FBI and I know that residents want you to tell them, but I don't know if they understand when something is under an FBI investigation, you can't talk about it. So you can't say anything other than it's under FBI investigation, not what you read on Real Talk, not what you read on Facebook. We can't say anything else. You think, I as a councilperson would love to get more details to make everyone feel easy, but I can't because it would be a breach of the case. Now, that particular property we've maintained, not once, it's been maintained quarterly. My question is, I know that our city employees are out there, but isn't that a lien on the home and hasn't that resident been fined and paid said fines? I know we need to look into the taxes because that does seem kind of low. But all we can do right now, I know as a councilperson, it's not just that property, it's actually the property across the street as well is abandoned. And it used to be tires and cars and refrigerators and things dropped off, so the city chained up the front and the side of it and cut the, you know, so it is in a process. So I just want to be clear on that. And again, I want to say it, I've talked to the police about it about ten times. I know residents feel that you can just share information that's under an FBI investigation, but you can't. And if I'm wrong, the police are back there, we just can't. So when you take, when you become a councilperson and you get information, honestly, all I know is it's under FBI investigation. So when we say uptick in crime, we know that the two, the other things that took place in the South Ward were domestic and not that that makes anyone feel better, but we just need to be clear when we're stating things because residents do believe what we say. So again, I would like the police to go, you know, they do the police blotter in the transcript. I just think we need to do a better job of communicating because residents want to know, even if you say it's under investigation, they want to know at least that. So I just think we need to do a better job with communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of concerns that I want to discuss with the BA. What are the plans for the garbage collection and cans in the city? You advised recently that the administration would roll out a comprehensive plan. I receive complaints every day about the garbage is not being picked up on a timely basis. We need a new, a plan for new garbage cans and recycle cans with lids, okay? Garbage cans with lids invites rats. I previously asked for garbage cans for Lincoln Avenue, Fort Lincoln Avenue, from Central Avenue to Hayward Avenue, and this is Garbage Alley. And we really need garbage cans on Lincoln Avenue. Second of all, the Highland Avenue train station. We have a five-year lease from New Jersey Transit dated three nineteen twenty to three nineteen twenty-five. I understand we received a grant to refurbish the station. Why hasn't there been any work to the train station and where is the grant money? The library. Again, I asked, what are the plans to have the library reopened to the public? Revaluation. Has the process started yet? I know some people got letters. I haven't received anything. Are they doing it ward by ward? You know, what is the process?
So let's start with the garbage.
Sure.
Ordinance will be introduced on the first meeting in September. The garbage collector's contract is being reviewed by law with the intention of breaching it. I'm trying to terminate the garbage contract because part of the problem is the collection company. It's a big part of the problem.
Yeah, the problem is they don't pick up on a timely basis and, you know, for the dumpsters, their truck is broke lots of times.
Yep. The garbage cans, I have to have Mr. May's address. I know that several were ordered and put out, but I don't know what the priority was in terms of where they were placed. Let's talk about the grant and the Highland Avenue Station.
Yes.
Although the lease was signed, it was contingent upon DOT review. DOT has had it for how long, Marty?
DOT is, Marty May's, DPW, DOT has had it for about a year, which is not a long time considering all of the things that they have to sign off on. I spoke with the mayor yesterday. I'm trying to enlist the mayor to get his help directly, but what I've been saying publicly, and I said it to my boss, the BA, that by the end of the year, we'll be out the bid with the train station.
Thank you.
The answer with regard to the grant funds is that they're where they're supposed to be, in the bank.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
So the answer with regard to the grant funds is that they're there where they're supposed to be, in the bank and in the possession of the state entity that reimburses for the work that gets done.
Do you know how much that grant is?
I do, but I'm going to let Marty tell you.
The original grant for the train station was six hundred and twelve thousand, and I don't know if many people know this, but we actually petitioned the federal government. We received another six hundred thousand dollars on top of that for the project. So total project cost is one-point-two million.
And Marty, just briefly, what does the project entail?
There's two projects, basically, but the main project is the rehabilitation of the train station in order to set up some type of convenience, a new store, a paper, selling the coffee. So it's the complete renovation plus the setup of any other opportunity for a convenience to go in there. There's also the outside of the train station, new sidewalks, new shrubbery, soup to nuts.
So we should see some movement by the end of the year?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilman, those grants are reimbursement grants. Those monies are held by the state and the federal government until a bill is presented to them for work that's completed that DOT has signed off on and New Jersey Transit signed off on. So those calls for the money missing are just inaccurate and inappropriate.
Oh, I didn't say any money was missing.
No, I didn't say you did.
Okay. All right, I just said, where is the money? What about the library?
So as you know, the administration doesn't run the library.
Yes, I know that.
But I've been after them to give me a plan for the reopening, and I should have one shortly.
Okay. And revow?
So the reason that the revow is taking place prior to ten years is because the State Department of Taxation and the County Board of Taxation ordered it. They're permitted under the statute to do that, and they've done it based upon the evaluation ratio that the city has, which is reported annually to both.
Okay, when is that taking effect, though?
So the company has already gone around and mapped out some of their work. They're preparing notices. The, there's actually a tax neighborhood map, not a ward map, and they do it by tax neighborhood. So every resident within that tax neighborhood will get advance notice by mail, and if they don't make an appointment, they'll get someone who comes and knocks on their door to try and make an appointment.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. BA. Again, I just wanted to say congratulations to our first African-American and Orange resident, you know, Fire Chief Gerard Long. And the promotion of Deputy Chief Derek Brown and Joseph Trezor. Again, the Fire Department does a fine job, and with the addition of you guys, promotion, we're a much better fire power, and it's a win-win situation. Thank you. DPW, Martin.
Thank you. Thank you for getting those dividers back on our Main Street, you know, in front of Dunkin' Donuts. We've been asking for that for a long time and finally it's happened. Thank you very much. As previously mentioned, National Night Out was a huge success last night. The community was out in the streets with neighbors, family, and friends, enjoying good food, drinks, and music. The city caravan was awesome, and the neighbors had a chance to meet and greet city officials, and it was such a great time. Everybody had a good time, so thank you, city. Today, we had the annual senior picnic that was postponed last year due to COVID. The seniors was out, enjoying the nice weather, food and music, and the mayor's comedy. I think everyone had a great time, you know, it was a great turnout, and we look forward to doing it again. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Council Vice President Easton.
I don't have a lot. First, before I speak, I want to bring back our police chief. I'm going to give him some of my time because it seems like each meeting, is that police chief still here? That always comes up about the response time, so I want him to explain it so that that can, we can put that to bed because I think there's a misunderstanding and a concept that some people really don't understand what happens in the police department when they have to respond to calls and be dispatched. So he's going to go through that real quick.
Hello again, everybody. It's good to be back up here. Concerning the response time. Response times vary depending upon the call buying of that common day of the state. And I can assure you, Mr. Ward, it wasn't six minutes, because I mean, it was maybe a minute. However, if you do say you have-- However, if you do say you have video and videotape, I would like to see that because that can only help me make my eyes better and see what the problem is. So, if you don't mind, you have my number, correct? Give your call, I'll have one of the dispatchers get to you. Number two, and BA and everybody else here, it's on video, it's on tape. Three times I gave the ratio of cops, three times, the ratio of cops to citizens. And I'll give it again. It's one cop for two hundred and thirty-eight citizens. So, and I've said that. Check the tapes. Number three. Now, I say what I mean and mean what I say. I, I'm a straight shooter. Everybody knows that.
Yes, yes.
And as far as the dispatchers, you brought it up, so other than the before, they're in the investigation. As we are well aware, I just cannot fire people. They have to go through an investigation first to have their due process. We just don't want to take someone's job away from them. Unless it's a heinous, egregious situation that happened at that time, everything must go through a process, and like I said before, just going through a process. And that will weed itself out. And you know what? Now that I'm up here, four time, the FBI, I did give notification to the mayor, the BA, the director, and to the councilwoman. And that's what will happen from here on in. Correct, Mr. BA?
Yep.
The, this, the, the information will be disseminated in that manner. That's all I could do for now until we get our new system, till we get a NICSIL or reverse nine-one-one. So, I assure you, we want to get this information out to you because it saves you a lot of phone calls, a lot of headaches. And the thing is, you're right, it's an FBI investigation. They don't even tell us most of the details that are going on. They just tell us, we're having an investigation, maybe this and maybe that. We'll let you know when we're done. Have a nice day. That's basically it. So, if anyone wants to ask any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, always a pleasure again.
Thank you. Appreciate it, buddy.
I have a question to, I guess this is for our BA. When you talk, oh, who talked about Highland Avenue? Maybe that's Mr. May's. Is that part of our Central Valley redevelopment?
I, I'm sorry, which?
The Highland Avenue Station that you just talked about, the grant money you have for it? So, how is, how is that coinciding with the Central Valley development, which is also going over there?
It's not part of the Central Valley redevelopment area. The Central Valley redevelopment area starts on the other side of the train tracks. It is part of the Scotland Road redevelopment area that we're working on.
So, but being that we're gonna include the train tracks as part of the Central Valley, that doesn't include the train station and all come together at one time?
No.
Okay.
The barrier that was drawn was the train tracks.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I, I was interested. And I have been asking for a list of the library board members. Can someone get that to me? I asked Mr. Copeland, I think a couple of weeks, he always, well, I asked him over a month ago. He always promises to deliver, and we have not seen it, because we as a council need to know who's on the library board.
I'll get it from Cheryl tomorrow and send it to the clerk for distribution.
So, we can figure out what's going on at the library and make sure that the information is flowing. I want to thank Mr. May for the help he's been in my ward and the things we've been addressing. There've been some major concerns that we're putting to bed. And as these things come up, we do meet on it. We have a little virtual call with whoever's complaining and make sure that we understand what they're actually asking for. So, and to our police chief, we just need to be vigilant on the streets and where we have permit parking. And I'm gonna make a request that you go through there like three and four in the morning because that's when the, the parking and the residents are complaining that when they get up to go to work at four o'clock, there's cars on their street without the permit. So, I think the cops do go through there, but they need to be through there consistently at all hours between, what is that, seven and six, so they can give the tickets out. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Council President. I'll take this muzzle off real quick. I enjoyed the feedback tonight, quite a bit of good conversation in our council meeting tonight from the citizens and also from colleagues. I, I do want to stress to the BA, if somewhere in the near future, he can put together the city's or the administration's game plan or action plan to deal with the parking meters situation, the collection of, of funds from the meters, and also how our Orange Fire, um, Orange Police Department or, or is going to assist until we get a, a parking authority up and running. See, when we get those questions, those types of questions from, from the general public, then their perceived numbers could be skewed on how much revenue we actually taking in. So, I think if the administration puts, puts a little oomph into trying to get that resolved before the year's out to, to really address that, uh, parking authority situation in our town. And for that, Council President, I'll, I'll yield.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Wooton?
Council President, I have about four things that I would like to talk about. One of them, since we've been out during COVID and calling our residents and walking around, knocking on doors, just making sure everyone is okay, we've noticed a lot of residents who are homebound. So, I just wanna see when we can send out information regarding the special registry. Code where we send it out is normally goes out during the tax bills. That's what the code says, and I, I've never gotten one. So, how can we get that out to our taxpayers and our landlord owners in the City of Orange? So, we can get that information back to the clerk's office so she can have that list so we'll know what's going on with our seniors or people who are homebound. They may or may not be seniors. And I'm not saying that she doesn't have the list. I just know I've never received information requesting that information, not, not during a tax bill. So, we could do that. I wanted to ask about a traffic study. Like, what is the criteria for a traffic study? What mandates a traffic study? Because I've been meeting with several blocks, and one of the biggest and main concerns is parking. And at these meetings, I hear her say, we need to do a traffic study before we can do this to the road. We need to do a traffic study before we can do that to the road. So, what is the criteria for a traffic study?
Marty May's, DPW, I don't want to misspeak. I'd rather let her speak with the engineer or have the engineer come back and talk about traffic studies.
Because, for example, to put a speed bump up?
It is, you don't need it to put a speed bump up.
But I've heard that being said during these meetings, that we have to do it.
You need it to put a speed bump up if the road you're putting it on crosses municipal lines.
Okay.
Just as you would need a traffic study if what you're doing is changing traffic patterns on a road that crosses municipal lines.
So, it's always during roads that cross municipal lines? It's never within the city?
If you have a road that's within the city, then that's under your jurisdiction, and you would, as a matter of best practices, do an engineering traffic review before you would put in a new regulation.
So, how often do we do those reviews?
Fairly frequently.
Last year, we did maybe four or five.
So, what constitutes changing a street to a one-way street? Like, what?
Well, in the case of Bradford Street, which is on the agenda tonight, we did a traffic analysis where, which is not a, a full-blown traffic study, but it's an analysis, analysis of the traffic counts, of the cars. Somebody literally goes out and counts the cars.
Okay. Because I was talking to a resident that lives in the vicinity, and he didn't know about the one-way street thing. So, I told him, obviously, it had to be some kind of traffic study or something that went on so I can go back and tell him. Actually, I'll text him.
Also, the, the main thing here that the city always uses is the petition, which is the first step. So, first is, in my view, first is the petition for what you want to do. Number two is either traffic analysis or traffic study, which is higher grade than analysis.
And included within that would be a public safety analysis.
Okay.
So, the big, a big issue on our streets is the ability to get a fire truck through or a police car at high speed or a rescue vehicle. And there are certain streets that we've looked at, made notes of, that either have to be changed to one way or we need to change the parking requirements.
And so, how do we let the residents know? Because I had a traffic meeting on Snyder Street, and they were told that there's a possibility that the street may become one-way. They, some people want permit parking, others want parking on both sides of the street. So, where that's concerned, like, what would you suggest, Director May? Like, a traffic study or, like, which one?
The first thing always starts with the petition. That's the first thing. When we get a petition in, we look at it, look at how many people signed it, make sure it's a wide berth of all the people in that area, but that's the first thing. Before it elevates to anything else, the petition is number one. And then, from there, we go to traffic analysis. From traffic analysis, depending on what's being requested, then we go to a full-blown study, which is a higher than an analysis.
So, was there a study done on Snyder Street to say that it may be a one-way street possibly?
No, I'm not familiar with that.
All right, and one other thing, and it may be you, Marty, I'm not sure. So, I, I've continued to ask for notification of when streets are gonna be closed. And I think we, and it's one of those things like who came first or what came first, the chicken or the egg. So, that's what I kind of get. Well, it's not the police, it's planning. Well, it's not planning, it's the police. So, in reading the code book, since I can't get that to give to residents, I'll do some legislation. But in addition to that, I think I read where even if you dig up the streets, you have to get a permit within forty-eight hours of digging up that street. So, is that true with public work? I mean, not public work, so PSENG? Because they dug up quite a few streets that we paved, and then they don't pave them like they were paved prior to digging up. For example, Scotland Road intersection now has a bump in it when it was recently paved.
I was just gonna say, that ordinance applies unless you're exempt. And public utilities are exempt. We do work with PSENG, and they've been pretty cooperative in terms of the repaving. So, if there's a repaving issue that isn't up to snuff, just give me that location because I can't keep up with all of them personally, and I'll bring it up with their Government Affairs rep.
And since they're exempt, we, there's nothing that we can do?
PSENG has to notify us for planned work, but in the case you're talking about is emergency work, they don't, they don't notify us for that. And then also, I just wanted to add, every year I get up here before you guys and talk about all the initiatives that PSENG puts forward so that we don't punch holes in work that we do, and they still do it. I got up last, uh, let's see, I guess la, in the fall, and I talked about they have this new thing ahead of paving, and we gave all the thirties, twenty streets we did last year, this year, this summer, starting actually last week, we're gonna do ten more. And some of those streets still have holes punched in them, and it's primarily PSENG.
So, if it's an emergency, like, how, what timeline do you say is an emergency? Because sometimes-
Classified is twenty-four hours.
Okay, because sometimes there is a police officer or sheriff.
There is a police officer. You will, you're right. We talked about this. You will see a police officer, but that, that don't mean they came into the office and put in a permit. And, I mean, I know you talk about this all the time. The last time we had this issue with DOT, and the mayor knows, I called up the new DOT commissioner, and he's just not willing to commit seriously to work with Orange. And not just Orange. I mean, he does the same thing down, you know, to A and down Freeway Drive East and West. But I guess something paid off because you noticed they paved it, which I didn't even know anything about. I couldn't tell you that they're paving Freeway Drive East and West because they didn't tell me until after they, the day that they started. I called because of you. He says, well, Marty, we're gonna do X, Y and Z. Then he gave me the schedule. They're just not cooperative. For, 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 I don't know why, but, I mean, I guess they dealing with Newark and all the other cities down the line. We all calling them, hollering at them. I guess that's it, but it should be better coordinated. You're absolutely right. It should be better coordinated. Most of the times, it's not on my end, it's on their end, but sometimes it's on my end too. Like now, today, we paved two streets in Orange. I, I didn't notify you which streets they were, could, but I could've.
One of those streets didn't have a police officer there either.
Uh.
They had paved them, but no-
Hickory? Hickory had five officers. That's what the city is paying for. I hope that's not true. And I've been working, I've been working with Sergeant Stefanelle, I mean Lieutenant Stefanelle, who's in the back. He can get up here and tell you they had five officers.
Maybe the one on Central Avenue had gone to the restroom or something.
Yeah, I, I saw that this morning. We did Oxford Street, and one of the officers came and on the other side was talking with the other guy while the other side was open. But I'm not a police officer. I guess I could've called Lieutenant Stefanelle and told him, but I don't think he stayed there for a long time. Maybe that's what happened.
Thank you.
On the DOT issue, just so you know, it's not just Orange. Same problem in East Orange, West Orange, Newark, to the point where even out in, in the Caldwell's on the ramps, to the point where the administrators from those municipalities have gotten together to draft a letter to the commissioner. There's gotta be better coordination.
Because we receive lots of texts and phone calls when people are trying to hurry someone.
Well, we don't even get notification when they're closing the exit ramps. And they know that weeks in advance.
So, my things were the special needs registry, the traffic studies, and the street closure. That's it, I think. Thank you.
That's it? On the special needs study, I'll coordinate with the clerk, but I don't think there's any reason why we can't put that in a tax bill.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Weldon, Monica Q. III.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, and BA, maybe we could maybe talk about this later, but this is the one year, uh, the one-year anniversary of me asking you, you was gonna give me an update on the case study for the new firehouse? And what are we gonna do? Because I live in the East Ward, okay? Over there on Washington Street is C. D. S. citizen homes. You never know what can happen. That was always there from, you know, I've been on Dwyane Street for years and years. So, I need to know the status update on the new firehouse. I also need to know, is the radon affecting anyone over there? Or whatever's in the, something's in the soil, correct?
Yeah, it's not radon.
It's not radon, but whatever. Is it affecting either, either citizen?
The oil plume, as far as we know at this stage, has not infiltrated the neighboring properties.
Okay. So, we, I just need to know what we're gonna do with that firehouse. If we're not gonna rebuild, are we gonna knock it down? I was told it's a place where public works. They use that as a garage now. So, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with that, and I think we do have a need for a firehouse. Also, number two, it was my first National Night Out. As a councilperson, I had a great time. I appreciate all the council people that was there. Great time, okay? Marty May's? Is he still here? I need you. A, a lot of the red- A, a lot of the residents on Park Avenue and Center Street area, okay, you know where that little garage is? Right? Soon as you turn onto Center Street and Park Avenue, it's a little, it used to be an old garage there.
Yeah.
They are, that's where all the rats are. They're running into our people's yards. Um, you know. And I've actually saw them myself. They, they live back there. Maybe we need to clean it out. I heard you gave one of the residents some traps, right?
I had Vinnie go.
Yeah, Vinnie gave, gave them some traps, and every single trap caught a rat. So it's a rat problem. And it could stem from what uh Councilman Ross said, the garbage cans. You know, they're actually getting into Colgate near the skate park, cause it's right there.
Yes.
I actually saw, and I think I reported it to Chris, the BA, about they, they have rats in their area.
Okay.
So could you please look into that?
Yes.
Just so you know, we took the health officer out there.
Uh-huh.
We took the health officer out there, and we baited that property.
I know, they told me, they still have them.
And we baited all the sewers in the neighborhood.
Right.
All of the storm drains, everything.
Okay, I really appreciate that. Uh, the next thing, I was there for the swearing-in, so I took the liberty to walk around at the firehouse on my own, just to look at, look at the firehouse. Oh, by the way, I am the fire department liaison, I was just named. I think Councilwoman Summers, you are as well. So I took the liberty to walk around. Paint chips up in there. I don't know if it's lead, you know, holes in the floor, you know, it's just, you know, they're living, these, these guys live here. So I think we need to pay attention to our fire department. I mean, it's, these guys live in this place. I don't know if it's lead. We don't know, the paint chips up on the wall. Uh, so is there a way we can get that place painted? Or we'll talk later?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna talk later. All right, um, the police, did they leave? Maybe someone can take notes. Are they out there?
I don't know.
They left?
I got it, go ahead.
All right, Colgate Park, up in the skate park, there's drug activity. They smoking marijuana every day. I actually went up there today. It was a fight. We, you know, maybe the police should stop in during the day, just to cha- chase some of the bad elements out of, out of Colgate. Because before, last year, the skate park was a safe haven for kids. Now the older kids are up there. Uh, and it's not right. So we gotta find a way to, you know, take care of that. Let's take care of that. Maybe the police can show up, drive up, take a walk around the skate park. All right? And that's just about, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. BA, I'll be real quick. Uh, Marty stepped out of the room, but I, all right. I asked this um several times over the last few years um regarding our snow removal. Um.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Regarding snow removal.
Okay.
Um, I, I know right now, over the last few years, um, the snow uh winters being uh loaded on to the, the trucks. They dumping it at the old uh hospital parking lot. And I say this many, many times before, say it again. Um, that just creates like an environmental um, you know, issue. You know, but not only that, it's just an ice sore. And at some point in time, that property is going to be um unavailable uh for, you know, for snow dumping. And I, I, I'm just asking, uh, again, um, you know, uh, you know, I know not in this year's budget, you know, but as we move um into our next year's budget, you know, can we, you know, seriously consider uh the snow melt machine so we can get ahead of um uh the way that we dispose of our snow? That's something that we need to just get a proactive approach on.
We've gotten uh information on the snow melting machines. So we're looking at it.
All right. And that's pretty much all what I have. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on second reading, public hearing, fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, chapter two, ten, development regulations to prohibit any class of cannabis business within its geographical boundaries. The sponsors of this was amended, sponsored by Councilmember Eason, Coley, Johnson Junior, and Mont- Montague the Third and Ross. Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Madam Clerk, motion to lift fourteen twenty twenty-one from the table.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Veross, on the motion?
On the motion.
Seeing on roll call.
Stayed on the motion. Council President, you said on the motion?
Somebody was on?
It was me. Are, are we gonna see what the amendments are?
Oh, the only amendment was the um sponsors.
Got it.
On the motion, um, roll call, Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson? To lift? Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten? No?
No.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
This uh ordinance is now lifted from the table. Are there any citizens who wish to speak on citizen comments? Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Madam Clerk, motion to close citizen comments.
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, second by Councilmember Montague the Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adopt on final?
Move, Council, uh, Madam Clerk, move.
Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion, Madam Clerk, I have a uh statement I would like to read. Of course, does any of the councilmembers have anything to say? Before I read my statement.
Council President?
Yes.
You said you're getting ready to read a statement?
Yes.
Is that statement amending or something to what was here?
This is just on the motion.
Oh, okay.
This is on the motion statement, the way that you make your comments.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Okay, good day all. I wanna thank everyone, including citizens of Orange, business owners, clergy, board of education, and residents from other communities for your passionate involvement in democratic process here in Orange regarding our cannabis legislation. The legalization of cannabis has occurred in several states around our country over the years. Here in New Jersey, I first became aware of this topic in two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and eighteen, several municipalities across the state passed ordinances prohibiting the sale of legalized cannabis in their municipalities. Since then, the talks grew louder and the interest grew stronger at the state level concerning legalization of cannabis. Fast forward to today, last year, the state passed legislation giving municipalities the option to accept or prohibit any class of cannabis businesses within its geographical boundaries. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, ordinance fourteen twenty twenty-one was passed on first reading banning the six classes of cannabis businesses in Orange. On April twentieth, we had a public hearing, and the council tabled this ordinance to give the administration more time to create their plan. On Moi, on, on May fourth, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Warren logged into our city council meeting during matters of destruction and updated the city on, on update, on city issues and the cannabis legislation that he was considering. At the end of his update, Mayor Warren stated that he will forward a copy of his cannabis legislation slash plan to the clerk office by Friday, May seventh, twenty twenty-one, for distribution to the council. The clerk's office didn't receive Mayor Warren's proposed cannabis ordinance, not until Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. After reviewing this proposed cannabis ordinance, I had conversations with the majority of the city council, and they all had questions that they wanted answered before they were considered supporting this ordinance. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, I emailed a, uh, the list of questions from the majority of the city council to the city attorney regarding the mayor's proposed cannabis ordinance. As of today, I never received a response from the city attorney regarding the questions that I emailed him. With that being said, tonight is the end of the rule for this governing body to take action to prohibit or accept the six classes of cannabis businesses here in Orange. After a careful review and thorough review, the majority of the city council had decided to prohibit any class of cannabis businesses within the geographical boundaries of Orange Township. This would give the city more time to assess both the negative and the positive consequences of legalized cannabis. I would also like to further clarify that this prohibition, ladies, do you mind?
No, I don't. You gotta be kidding me. You just raised taxes.
Do you mind? Stop being disrespectful right now. Thank you.
All right, it doesn't even matter.
I would also like to further clarify. I would also like to clarify.
Jeez.
That prohibiting does, this prohibition does not apply to the businesses that sell hemp-based products, which is allowed by the state-passed legislation. Please be advised that by, do you mind your interruptions? This is completely disrespectful.
Talk, keep talking, I'm not listening to you.
Thank you. Please be advised that by opting to ban the cannabis businesses, now we can opt back in at any time. No time limit for ba- for opting back in. In conclusion, the passing of this ordinance gives the City of Orange more time to prepare a thorough and comprehensive plan for the cannabis industry in Orange. Madam Clerk?
Council President?
Councilwoman Wooten?
Are we, okay. First of all, it's not the mayor's duty to legislate anything. So whether he sent you a proposed legislation or not, that's not his job. That's our job. And some people seem not to know that on the council. We legislate. That's what we're supposed to do.
We.
So whether Mayor Warren sent it to them or not, we legislate. So Councilwoman Summers Johnson and I, we know that. So we went out and we met with the public.
Point of order.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
A point of order takes president over what you are saying. Point of order. I, I, Council President?
Yes.
You are sitting in that chair as the president to leave this council.
Point of order. Tell them what to do.
Point of order.
Y'all listen now.
Point of order.
Listen.
Uh, I don't think it's fair that it's allowed to anyone. We talk about disparaging remarks on for the, for the residents. It should be the same for council members.
This is the truth.
It should be the same for council members. That's all I have to say. As you sit in that chair, it's, it's, it's just being disrespectful.
We're on the motion, Madam Clerk.
On the motion, Council President? No, I wasn't through. Oh, yeah, finish talking. So disparaging? It was the truth. It was the truth. The majority of the council on March, whatever that date was, decided that they were gonna prohibit marijuana in the City of Orange Township. And actually, it wasn't the majority, it was Councilwoman Eason.
So you're gonna tell it.
Point of order, Councilwoman Wooten.
Tell the truth, Councilwoman. Don't lie.
Whose name was on the order?
Don't lie, Councilwoman. Because first of all, you do not know what you're talking about.
Appeared on the ordinance as you read.
Councilwoman Wooten, you not been recognized right now. Madam Clerk, move to your.
You don't have to recognize me, Kerry Coley.
Thank you.
You don't have to.
Madam Clerk?
Because I bet in two years, the people are gonna recognize.
Thank you.
You have done, raised people's taxes today in here, won't answer people. Sit up and whenever you feel like saying, it's the majority of the council or we the council, then it's all of us. You, 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 you can't have it both ways.
And you can't have it both ways either, Miss Wooten.
You, you can't have it both ways.
You can't either.
You sit up, y'all sit up, y'all are funny. Y'all sit up and let somebody tell y'all how to vote. So you, so you say screw the people, that's what you say, screw the people, and let's listen to each other. You get up here, you talk about my constituents this, my constituents that. That's what you talk about.
Roll call, roll call.
But then, you slapped them in the face. Talk it. I said on the motion, I still didn't talk yet. I didn't talk yet. You want people to be respectful, like you, I teach middle school. I teach, I show respect, like I tell my students, when it's needed. I teach middle school, but I'm not in middle school. Like, you said you, you, you had a meeting, I guess it was a silent meeting. How you gonna keep the two people?
I didn't say nothing about it.
How are you gonna keep the two people out of the meeting that actually went out and held community meetings?
Councilwoman Summers Johnson, no one never said a meeting, I said conversation.
You talked with the majority of the people. Where'd y'all talk at?
Right.
You didn't talk to, you never asked me anything. You don't think, you don't think you should've asked me something, Council President?
Nope.
You don't, you don't think I deserve a chance to talk to you as president? Or you only talk to them? I mean, honestly, we can disagree. But you telling me that I don't even deserve a conversation with you, the president? Didn't they vote you president, cause you were gonna unify this council?
Right.
Did we go out on some retreat so we could sit around and air our dirty laundry and get it out so we can work together? No, we didn't do that. You just said you spoke with the majority of the council. You did not call me. How disrespectful is that? How disrespectful is it for you to speak for me? Does it look like I need somebody to speak for me?
For you.
Now, let me just say this. The reason why I said for Councilwoman Eason to tell you what to do, because that's what she does every time when we interrupt you, she says, you're sitting in it, you know you're sitting in that chair, you've been in that chair for a while. You know, and I agree with you when you're good, but everybody needs criticism. You might not like the rules with cannabis, but you said you had a conversation through thorough research. What thorough research? You had ninety-three I D here, you had brown box here, you wait on the day when it's like two people here. Uh, Mr. Ward asked that we have a Zoom. You wait on the day that we don't have a Zoom, right? We have no participation from the public. This is the day you decide to do this? Are you kidding me? Have you lost your mind right now? You do this on a day with no Zoom?
Councilwoman.
With no Zoom?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
Ah, let, let me tell you. What? Remove who?
Councilwoman.
Oh, okay, I thought you was talking about removing me, cause I was, yeah. What I'm saying to you is, just, just, just thinking about the public for a second, right? We represent thirty thousand on record, fifty thousand undocumented. Let's get it, let's get it right, right? Do we have even a little bit of that here? We, we as, honestly, as, as councilpeople, we usually did everything with Zoom, right? So we go back in person, which is fine. We understand we gotta open up, right? We, we get that, right? You open up, you don't have the Zoom, you only have YouTube, right? Residents can't respond on YouTube. Nobody's looking at the YouTube and answering. You waited until the, this is not good for you as a president. This doesn't look good as you, for you as a president.
Councilwoman, you make it sound like I control the TV station.
You are the president and you should demand that this meeting be on Zoom. You run the meeting. Didn't she tell you to run the meeting?
This is, Councilwoman, you know, you guys.
No, you guys, I'm not in no clique. I'm a grown woman. I'm not in no clique. I'm a grown woman. It's no clique.
A lot of y'all questions and concern are geared towards the administration, and.
How is it, this, the, the administrat- when did I mention administration? Show me where you asked the administration to get this meeting on Zoom. Show me where you told the administration to put this meeting on Zoom.
It's a good question, I didn't.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking. You can do whatever you want, you have the majority. I get it. Nothing we say, the two of us, cause we're like a do-op group, I guess, nothing we say is gonna answer, but what I'm saying is on the look of the public, right, just to work, just, just, just putting out there, and that goes for all of you councilpeople. Cause I don't know who you think you represent, right? But you are, are doing a disservice to your residents. Because you wait until, I done put my phone away, nine, nine twenty-two, right, on a Wednesday, we normally meet on Tuesday, but you know, on an off day, you decide to make a major decision.
Councilwoman, this is the last time that we're gonna have a regular meeting.
Why can't we call a special meeting? We call them all the time for nothing.
And, and you know that, that, that if you don't do anything, that the town get locked in.
Who told you that? That if you don't do anything, you get locked in?
That's the law. Everybody knows that who is the majority.
Cause I'm not a lawyer.
Can, can I break in?
Please.
The law says you'll get locked in.
The, the law says you'll get locked in as to zoning, but not regulating time, the amount of establishments, manner, place. So it's the zones they get locked in. You can still, you have the discretion how, if you, if you're going to license someone, they still need municipal approval. There, so, so there's a lock-in, but it's not an entire lock-in, it's as to zones.
And, and let me just add to that. So, when you mentioned, the way that you said it, and again, it's in the wording. The way that you said it, you said basically, because the administration didn't give me an answer, that is again making it seem like the, this, it wasn't the mayor's budget, this was our budget, let me be clear, it wasn't the mayor's budget, right? And it's not the mayor's job to talk about the regulation of cannabis. Why are we relinquishing our power to the administration when none of it is there?
Administration.
Council President, I, 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 I defer.
Councilwoman Johnson.
In some of the opinions that I'm hearing from my colleagues, can we move to take the vote up or down, please?
Y'all got it anyway. I'm just telling you what the residents are going to say, that it's just not a good look on this particular day, right?
Because the administration doesn't have a plan in place?
If the administration doesn't make the plan, who told you that? We legislate, we're legislate towards.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Y'all gotta stop letting them tell you what to do.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
No, absolutely not.
Councilmember Wooten?
Nope.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
That's five yeas, two noes, the motion passed. Twenty-four dash 2021, the recommendation is to leave this postponed. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter Four, titled Administration of Government, Article Two, entitled City Council, Section Fifteen, entitled City Clerk.
Madam Clerk, can I move to lift?
You move to lift? It's not, it's postponed.
It's postponed? For another meeting? We not voting on it?
The recommendation was to postpone it.
Oh, okay.
There a motion to postpone?
I'm making a motion to postpone.
It's already postponed, isn't it?
It's already postponed to the.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Second, uh, Councilmember Easton? On the motion?
On the motion.
Roll call, Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Which one were we on, I wasn't paying attention?
Twenty-four dash 2021, we, we, um, we're leaving it postponed.
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
This will be postponed to the September meeting. Twenty, thirty-four dash 2021, an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Orange Township amending the Central Valley redevelopment plan to include Block 4,009, Lot One, currently owned by New Jersey Transit Corporation in District Four. Are there any citizens who wish to speak? Motion to close citizen comments?
Motion, Council, Madam Clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Motion.
Second, Johnson Jr.
Motion by Councilmember Easton, second by Councilmember Johnson Jr. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thirty-six dash 2021, a ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 200 dash 32, No Parking, Bradford Street. Are any citizens who wish to speak? Motion to close citizen comments?
Motion to close citizens' comments.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Move, Madam Clerk.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thirty-seven dash 2021, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 200 dash 33, No Parking Certain Hours, Bradford Street. Any citizens wish to speak?
Motion to close citizens' comments.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. Motion to adopt on final?
Move, Madam Clerk.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross, on the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thirty-eight dash 2021, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 200 dash 38, One Way Street, Bradford Street. Any citizens wish to speak?
Move to close citizens' comments.
Motion to close by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
On the motion.
You making a motion?
Uh, motion, motion to, uh.
Adopt on final. Second.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Montague III. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thirty-nine dash 2021, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 200 dash 40, uh, Schedule Nine, Stop Intersections, Bradford Street. Any citizens wish to speak?
Motion to close citizens' comments.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Motion to adopt on final, Johnson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty dash 2021, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the city of Orange Township, Chapter 166, titled Rent Control, to reform the system for registration of rental units, the licensing of such units, and to impose sanctions on landlords who permit repeated violations by law by their tenants. Is there, um, um, any citizens wish to speak?
Motion to close citizens' comments.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt on final?
Mo, second, motion to adopt on final.
Second, Johnson Jr.
Motion by Councilmember Easton, second by Councilmember Johnson Jr. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance introduction and first reading, forty-one dash 2021, an ordinance to amend Chapter 180 of the city of Orange Township Municipal Code, entitled Smoking on Public Property, Tobacco Retail Establishment, sponsored by Councilmember Easton. Is there a motion to adopt on first?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-two dash 2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 88, Fees, Article One, Fees Derived from Code Provision, Section 88 dash one, Schedule of Fees for Fire Protection, Standpipe Connections, as initially established by ordinance number four dash two hundred, two thousand and four. Motion to adopt on first?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Jr., second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-three dash 2021, um, was amended. I'll read the ordinance, the title, and then tell you where was it amended. Uh, and, an ordinance amending Chapter 88, Fees, Article One, Fees Derived from Code Provision, Section 88 dash one, Schedule of Fees, Setting Rates and Fees for the Use of Water slash Sewer System as initially established by ordinance number fifty-eight dash 2013, and as amended by ordinance number twenty-nine dash 2017. The amendment is in Section A, and it inserted the column amended allowed per quarter cubic feet. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second, Johnson Jr.
Motion by Councilmember Montague III, second by Councilmember Johnson Jr. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call, Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Jr.?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
The motion passed. The final readings for the ordinance that was just passed on first reading will be September seventh. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Are there any items the council wished to remove?
Council members?
Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Three sixty-seven, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Any others? I think the budget insertion. We're gonna remove that one for a two-third vote. Any others?
Marty's raising his finger.
Any others, council members?
We waiting, Marty is, um.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Can, administration's asking you to return three sixty-two and three sixty-three.
Three sixty-two? And, three sixty-two?
The, three sixty-two and three sixty-three?
Okay, so we'll just remove them.
The site remediation, uh, resolution.
Alright. The consent agenda consists of three forty-six, three forty-seven, three forty-eight, three forty-nine, three fifty, three fifty-one, three fifty-two, three fifty-three, three fifty-four, three fifty-five, three fifty-six, three fifty-seven, three fifty-eight, three fifty-nine, three sixty, three sixty-three, three sixty-four, three sixty-five, three sixty-six, three sixty-eight, three sixty-nine, three seventy, three seventy-one, three seventy-two, three seventy-four, three seventy-five, three seventy-six, three seventy-seven, and three seventy-eight. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Montague III? Second by Councilmember Johnson Junior. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Three sixty-one dash twenty twenty-one is being returned to administration. A resolution amending Resolution Number one eighty-four dash twenty twenty to authorize additional attorney fees for David C. Stanzell LLC as special counsel in calendar year twenty twenty-one with regards to Louis D. De Source's versus Dennis Manning et al., Doc. Number two, colon, eighteen dash C V dash zero nine three two four dash S D dash L D W in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Madam Clerk, did, was that three sixty-one or three sixty-two that was being returned?
You just read three sixty-one. Three sixty-two and three sixty-three are the ones to be returned.
It's three sixty-two and three sixty-three?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is, since it's already off the consent agenda, and, uh, okay. Three sixty-two and three sixty-three, I could've swore I just read three sixty-three into the record on the consent agenda. I did not?
No, you didn't.
I think I did.
Then you gotta redo it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to rescind the motions for the consent agenda?
Madam Clerk, you can, uh, make a motion to rescind the, the reading on the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion to rescind by Councilmember Johnson Junior, second by Councilmember Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
So that vote has now been rescinded. The consent agenda consists of three forty-six, three forty-seven, three forty-eight, three forty-nine, three fifty, three fifty-one, three fifty-two, three fifty-three, three fifty-four, three fifty-five, three fifty-six, three fifty-seven, three fifty-eight, three fifty-nine, three sixty, three sixty-one, three sixty-four, three sixty-five, three sixty-six, three sixty-eight, three sixty-nine, three seventy, three seventy-one, three seventy-two, three seventy-four, three seventy-five, three seventy-six, three seventy-seven, three seventy-eight. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Madam Clerk, move.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
The motion passed. Three sixty-two dash twenty twenty-one is being recommended to be returned to administration. A resolution authorizing the city of Orange Township to apply for hazardous discharge site remediation fund, HDSRF, grant funding for three twenty-one Scotland Road, City of Orange, Essex County, New Jersey, zero seven oh five. Is there a motion to return to administration?
Motion.
Second, Johnson Junior.
Motion by Councilmember Easton, second by Councilmember Johnson Junior. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
It's returned to administration. Three sixty-three dash twenty twenty-one is being returned to administration. A resolution authorizing the city of Orange Township to apply for hazardous discharge site remediation fund, HDSRF, grant funding for five oh seven Mitchell Street, City of Orange, Essex County, New Jersey, zero seven oh five oh. Is there a motion to return to administration?
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
That's six, I mean, the motion passed. Three sixty-seven dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution retaining Klingman, Cremelli, attorneys as special counsel to represent City of Orange Township employee in connection with matters pertaining to government inquiries and investigations regarding the City of Orange Township and its employees in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion to, um, move, move.
Second, Montague.
A motion to what?
A motion, a motion to adopt?
A mo, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Councilmember Johnson Junior? Second by Councilmember Montague III? On the motion?
Yes, I just have a few questions here, um, with three sixty-seven. I see that there are some redactions, um, of this person who is seeking, um, uh, of this, uh, help from this attorney, and Madam Clerk, did anyone reach out to you in writing, um, requesting to be indemnified?
No.
No? Okay. I'll leave it right there.
On the motion? CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
No.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
No.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
What's the number again, I'm sorry?
We on three sixty-seven.
No.
Um, Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
No.
That's four nays, three yays, the motion did not pass. Three seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution authorizing approval to amend CY twenty twenty-one municipal budget by inserting items of revenue and appropriation totaling two hundred ninety-one thousand, forty-two dollars in additional grant funds. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Johnson Junior?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson Junior, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ross. On the motion?
On the motion.
CNN roll call. Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson Junior?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
Council President Coley?
Yes.
Motion passed. New business. Walk-on, uh, resolutions and ordinances. There are three, um, walk-on items, uh, one ordinance and two resolutions. I'll read the titles in. Forty-four dash twenty twenty-one W O, capital ordinance appropriating twenty-eight thousand one hundred from the Capital Improvement Fund to pay for equipment for the Department of Public Works of the City of Orange Township and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey. Resolution three seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one W O. A resolution re-appropriating four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in excess bond proceeds from bond ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty nineteen, finally adopted November eighteenth, twenty nineteen, to provide for the purchase of body worn cans, cameras for the use by Police Department of the City of Orange Township and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey. Three eighty dash twenty twenty-one W O.